All right, folks, we're ready to get started. And let me thank you for coming out on this wet evening to join us this evening. We appreciate your presence here for this, a duly called, regularly-scheduled Greer City Council Meeting. We gather tonight on October the 27th, 2015, for the meeting, having called the meeting to order. I'd like to ask if you would join us as we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invocation by Councilman Jay Arrowood.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, as we come tonight in your presence, I ask that you bless this group of servants. Lord, you have given us the responsibility to be stewards of this fine city. You've blessed this city; you've blessed us. Be with us tonight as we do the business and do your work. Give us the wisdom and the knowledge that we need so that everything we do will be pleasing to you. In your holy name I pray, amen.
Ms. Duncan, has anybody requested to speak in public form this evening?
No, sir.
With that, then, we'll move to the minutes of the council meeting from October the 13th. I'll entertain a motion that they be received.
Second.
I have a motion and a second in that regard. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Ms. Booker.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert.
Yes.
Mayor Daner.
Yes.
Counsel, you have the departmental reports contained in your packet. There you'll find activity from the month of September. The administrator or department head will be glad to give you any additional information you might seek in that regard. We welcome our financial director this evening to bring us a financial update and activity report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we'll please bring to you the financial performance summary for the month ended, September 30, 2015. Beginning with the general fund, as you're aware there, our revenues are cyclical, so we're not receiving a high level of revenue at that time. We have revenue reported of $1,175,767, with expenditures of $4326,601. That amount is 3% under budget. Looking at the general fund cash balance, we have a carrying value of $5,451,158. Referencing to that, we have a negative combined benchmark variance of $360,446. Looking at hospitality fund, we're in the third month of collections there, and collections from the revenue side of hospitality continue to be very strong. We have revenue of $479,120, and that amount is 4% over budget. We have a expenditure in the hospitality fund right now of $64,110, and a carrying cash balance of $190,730. And then finally, moving to our stormwater fund, again, the revenues there are related to taxes, so there's very little revenue coming in related to stormwater right now. We have revenue reported of $4,849, and expenditures of $16,179, and that amount is 19% under budget currently. We have a carrying cash balance in the stormwater fund of $790,327. That's our report for the performance summary and for the budget. If you have any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Seifert. Questions? As always, Mr. Seifert or Mr. Driggers will be glad to help you with any additional information in regards to the report that you might have. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Speaking of Mr. Driggers, it's the administrator's report. Mr. Driggers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. You probably have received, or we certainly hope you have received, we've dropped in the mail our annual leaf brochure with information about our collection program that has -- should be now distributed citywide to all of our residents. We will begin that pickup schedule on November the 2nd. And again, we've had good success with that rotating schedule over recent years. We are using that system again this year. And if you have any questions, or if any of your constituents have questions relative to that program, by all means, please ask them to reach out and give us a call. We're glad to follow up with them. Also delivered into many mailboxes across the city are our citizen survey. We had a postcard that went to folks to let them know that the questionnaire would be delivered. They are now receiving those. And over the next several weeks, they will be completing those and returning those. And then after the first of the year, when we get the results of that, we look forward to bringing a report back to you on that as well. But if you should get any questions concerning that questionnaire, we invite you to refer them to us. We're glad to fill those questions, or certainly, we're glad to provide you with additional information that you may need. But we're certainly just reaching out and asking a sample of our community how we're doing. How are we doing relative to the services that we provide to our constituents each and every day? At your place today, you see a couple of items that have been distributed to you. One of those, which is becoming extremely popular, we are looking to go to a second printing immediately. That's not the hardbound book, that's the softbound book that you have in front of you. The children's coloring book is turning out to be an extremely popular item. We're getting hundreds of requests for that as word is getting out. We think it's a great tool for us to introduce young people in our community about the services that we provide. We suspect we'll even have a few adults that'll color in a couple of those pages, and if we're lucky, they'll learn a little more about what we do and how we operate here at the city. If you need any of those for any parts of your constituent services, let us know. We'll be glad to make those available to you as well. I know several of you visit schools and have groups that ask you to come in and speak with them, and we're glad to make that available to you. The other item that you have with you is also the hardbound edition copy of our Community Master Plan. We've just received those in that format. We've presented the plan. This council has taken action on that as well. And we are in the process of presenting more information to our community about that Community Master Plan. I will be doing a presentation with the Chamber of Commerce at their First Friday Program on November the 6th. So if your schedule would allow, love to have you join as my guest for that event here at City Hall. Just let us know that you'd like to attend, and we'll get you registered for that. But the emphasis of that program, that date, will be to share information to that audience concerning the Community Master Plan. But we wanted to make sure that you had a hardbound copy of that for your collection. As always, it's available online, and we refer people to our online version. But we do think it's important to have some hard copies of that as well. You may be familiar, at least through the media, that the Partnership for Tomorrow, which we are obviously one of the sponsoring partners of Partnership for Tomorrow, are doing some community grants in our downtown area. These Quality of Life Grants being administered by the Partnership for Tomorrow are available for any and everyone to apply for, which is a good thing, because our Recreation Department applied for one and has been awarded. So you'll see some improvements in the downtown area, particularly around the Depot area, Randall and Trade Street. They're going to do some beautification work in that area and are going to be using the grant that was awarded through Partnership for Tomorrow for that work as well. So we're glad to be a recipient of those resources.
Mr. Driggers, on that partnership grants, can you briefly say what that's supposed to benefit, and what's the purpose?
Yes, as part of the funding for the partnership, it is a grant that they intentionally left very open for folks to be innovative. So there are a number of grant applications. I'm not aware of all those that have been awarded, but I am obviously aware of the one that we were awarded. But the types of grants that I'm aware of have been anything from folks recommending bicycle storage areas, bicycle stands in the downtown area, art in the downtown area, public art, public improvements like landscaping, which is what we are doing. Others, Mr. Deaton, that you may have received?
Yes, sir. It's called the Make Greer Rank Program. It's a universal rank program. The offers that are made in September have been from the partnership. The voters against the next chamber, First Friday luncheon, anticipate four or five improvements, some private folks have made some requests that they rank. So it'll be very exciting when they're going to announce.
Resources dedicated through their funds to put back into the community. Yes, sir. As you are aware, we're continuing the demolition work at the old Allen Bennett Memorial Hospital site. That work is progressing ahead of schedule and is moving rapidly along. One of the next phases of that will be the demolition of the structures closest to Memorial Drive Extension. As a result of that, we are going to need to do some road closure in that area. As soon as we have the schedule from the crews, we will be publicizing that and getting that out. But I thought you may get some information, you may get some questions from folks relative to why was Memorial Drive closed, but it's just for safety. They're going to be so close to that area. So we're working with SC DOT and our folks. Obviously, the ambulance barn is right up that street, so there's a lot of folks that we have to notify, keep in the loop of what's going to be taking place there. They're expecting that that'll take about a week to complete, and so as soon as they give us the schedule, we'll publish that and make you aware of it as well. Try to minimize that inconvenience as much as we can, but again, want to make sure everyone's aware of what will be happening there. We are continuing to get notification of our partners over with the Legislative Delegation Transportation Committee relative to last year's paving list, which they're doing this year. As you know, we submit it, takes about a year for it to work through the process. You'll see that there's some work taking place around the city. They're doing some patching, that type of work, and we're anticipating that the paving will come in immediately right behind that as well. So those streets that were approved last year and that are being repaved, resurfaced, repaired, those are taking place in our community over the next several weeks, and you'll see some of that activity taking place. You may notice that our staff, particularly our leadership team, will be involved in a staff retreat this Thursday and Friday. We are doing that on-site. We will be here. But our department heads, our department managers, myself, will be involved that Thursday and Friday in training. And if you should need us, it'll be one of those dates that your call will probably go to voicemail, but we will get those and we'll return those as quickly as we possibly can. But we know that sometimes it can get a little frustrating if you're trying to reach someone, and it kind of rolls to the next person, or you'll try to get the next person. But that's where we are. We're going to be down here in Hall C. We'll be here all day on Thursday into the evening and all day on Friday as we are preparing for your retreat that'll be taking place in mid to late February 2016. We're starting to make our preparations for that, and then also as we start to anticipate requirements for the budget, as we start to work on that for 2016-17. So we'll be involved in that for the next couple of days. I did get an update concerning the performance appraisal system that's being done through GOV360. I appreciate everyone that has participated in that process. If you've not yet had an opportunity, you will probably get one additional reminder. That process closes on November the 11th. Again, I'm not made aware of who participates and who doesn't participate. I'm simply sent a tally that says here are the number of folks that have responded, and then they will do an automatic email notification to those folks who have not made a response, asking one additional time for that to occur. So if you've not had an opportunity, I sincerely ask you to please take up the 30 minutes or so to do that. It will be extremely valuable information resource to me as we continue to move forward. So you'll be looking for that in your email box if you've still got that to do. And the last reminder that I have for you is to ask that you please put on your calendar the Greer Development Corporation's annual meeting. That is on Thursday, November the 5th. If you need us to make a reservation for you for that event, please just let us know. We're glad to do that. David Swinson, who was with us previously before Mr. Deaton came on board, he is now the Economic Development Director in York County after spending some time with the Charlotte Region's office in Charlotte, North Carolina. He is now back in South Carolina and is with York County. Very, very excited to have him come back in and share some information about what he has been involved in over the last several years. But we're particularly excited to bring him back, to show him the advances that Greer has made since his departure as well. It'll be nice to reacquaint ourselves with Mr. Swinson. Certainly hope that you'll be able to attend that luncheon event again November the 5th. As always, I'm available if you have any questions this evening or afterwards. We're certainly available for that as well. Relative to executive session on your agenda tonight, I do not have any request to place for executive session this evening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel, with that, we'll move to items of new business, of which we've got a number this evening. And before we proceed with that, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank our mayor pro tem, Councilman Griffin, for handling the duties for me. The last time we met, I was out of town, and appreciate his assistance in running the meeting. I still can't get close to finishing a meeting in the same amount of time he does, but continue to try. But in any event, thank you, Councilman Griffin. I appreciate you stepping in for me. The first item of new business before us this evening is the first reading of ordinance number 22-2015. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of properties owned by Ira Handy, located on Oakland Avenue, McKissick Street, and Fuller Street, from C2 commercial to RM1 multifamily residential. Mr. Pace joins us to provide us information this evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you deny it, the property owned by Mr. Ira Handy, located in the lots that are -- doesn't have a street number, but they're on Oakland Avenue between McKissick and Fuller Street. We noticed a while back that a lot of these properties that are before you deny, were all going to commercial at one time. This one has a little bit of a history, it went back, it was a used proposal for it, it got rezoned, the use didn't happen, and therefore, the property remained C2. But we've gone as some housekeeping items that the city planning department has come up with all these issues to make it easier for redevelopment to occur in the Depot community. A part of the community's master plan that was approved years ago by the GCRAs had adopted. So these properties were applicant, was the city of Greer, co-applicant was Mr. Handy. He was present. If I was, I was on vacation at that time myself during this meeting. But all five of these deal kind of within those same realms of responsibility that we seen that we needed to clean up, and we'll do it, of course, going with the phone call individually. But Mr. Handy's property in particular, we had just requested residential zoning of our, I think, 7.5. After conversations with him, he requested to agree to the rezoning, but he requested that a RM1 zoning be applied to his property, which is residential multifamily. The planning commission did review this, probably was there to speak, and the note of the planning commission was to recommend for the zoning of RM1 for said property. And that's where recommendation is, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
A motion.
Have a motion to hear a second.
Second.
Have a second. Floor's open for discussion. By show of hand, is there anyone here this evening that represents this property either as the owner or agent? Let the record show indicate no one showed indicated so. Floor's open for discussion. Are questions of Mr. Pace?
Ma'am, I would agree with Mr. Pace's first assessment of it being rezoned back to residential, single-family, R7. And the reason is because there's been a lot of problems in neighborhood whenever they go with multifamily. And a lot of multifamily residents we have now, we have problems out of. And there's been a lot of talk in the community that they'd rather it just be single-family, because a single-family is much better. You don't have any problems. What GCRAs been doing with the single-family rebuilding in there, we hadn't had any problems out of. And it's much better for the neighborhood if it's single-family. We don't have those same problems that we do when we start doing the duplexes and the multifamily. So I'm in agreement with you that it should go residential, single-family.
Mr. Pace, this comes with the recommendation from the Planning Commission for the multifamily?
Again, originally, I'd say we had sought the R7.5, single-family residential. And again, once Mr. Handy got on board, he requested that we amend that to, not at the meeting, but prior to the actual meeting, to RM1. And in cooperation with him at that time, we did agree to do that from staff level and take that to the planning commission. Trying to see, discussing again was not in depth, but there was discussion and...
Was there a review of consistency in terms of is there other multifamily in that area, or is it primarily single-family residential?
There is a mix. There is multifamily just across...
There's one, the majority of it is single-family. There's one across there. And like I said, they've had problems out of that, and then there's one right around the corner that they've had problems out of too. And every time they put a multifamily in there, they have problems, as opposed to single-family residential.
Either or would not be out of character. Again, just public consent, I think was more, from what I gather from the meeting, public consent was more to single-family than it was to multifamily.
Let me, excuse me. When we say residential multifamily, does that mean anything from duplex to a full-blown apartment complex? I mean, does that include everything?
It could fit the lot dimension gesture. It could be a duplex, or it can be a single-family, it can go into a multifamily.
It can be eight units on that one, because it's, what, .41 acre lots?
Right.
So it can go up to eight.
I would have to agree with Mr. Griffin that, you know, if you read further the other actions that's requested by us, I think those are all recommended to go to R7.5, right?
Right.
I mean, I think the community would actually be served better if the zoning is even left at C2 versus changing it to RM1.
You're right.
I agree. I think 7.5 is the way to go. I think it benefits the community and the city.
I agree with Councilman Arrowood. It has been, if you talk to people in the community and you let them know, you know, and they know, understand the difference, they'll tell you they want single-family all the time. You know, because they know, you know, that there's been problems with the, and the character, and it's much better, and it strengthens the neighborhood when it's single-family. Like all the building that Martin and those have done from GCRAs with the single-family homes, they had no problems out of the single-family homes. All of them that they built, they all sold, you know, and they all came in, and it strengthened the community. But that multifamily, uh-uh, problems.
Mr. Pace, if council were to so choose to vote in opposition to the recommendation, does the property stay C2 at that point?
Yes, sir. If you vote to deny the request as is, recommendation for RM1, it would remain C2. Would be a year before any of these on could take place again for that property. Or you may amend to R7.5, and again, overturn decision totally, and again, that would be a two-year, a lot of honestly.
What are the acceptable uses for C2?
Uh, primarily, we call it neighborhood commercial. Stores, automobile sales are used for many, by special exception. Many warehouses could be, trying to think of all the uses.
That's fine. That gives me some idea. Okay.
Yeah, it's some minor retail stuff, nothing big lots or anything.
The map indicates .41 acres. Is that both lots, or is that the...
That would have been both.
Both of them.
Both together?
Yes.
So it's point, so if it remains C2, there's very limited, there's not a lot of things that would be out of character for the neighborhood that could locate there. I think you could probably get a neighborhood store on that size property, but not much other.
We're better off with C2 than we are with residential multifamily.
We are.
Mr. Pace, this type of zoning, I'm not, you said you weren't here when Mr. Handy came and asked, made this request?
We had telephone discussions. I was on vacation. We asked, and the meeting took place. He was exactly military deep out. He was in the state, but he was out bringing them for a period of time. And we communicated voicemail, or emails, and phone calls prior to this meeting inception.
So you're not sure what, why he's attempting to...
It has no intended use at this current time. He just thought, his thoughts were that being as the city seeking to rezone instead of a single-family residential class, he would see the multifamily class. Wasn't, he stated he hadn't been too unaware that it was C2. He purchased it, and it was already C2 when he purchased it somewhere back. I forget the actual date that it was rezoned. C2, I said there was an intended purpose for it then. I think it was a beauty shop, and then it was going to have some after-school programs and other things. That's what the idea was originally. Again, that never happened, and property has set based.
Mr. Griffin, I dropped some mail off at your house one day. Is this the drag strip I was telling you about?
It is. And I'd prefer it stay C2 as opposed to residential multifamily. Because as Councilman Arrowood stated, we'd better off if it was C2 as opposed to bringing apartments and that in there and duplexes. It's nothing but trouble ever since they came in, and nothing but trouble.
Ms. Booker, your calculation was that .4 acres would support eight units? Is that...
It can do like an eight-unit apartment, a little something do like the two sides.
With parking on .4 acres?
Mm-hmm. I'll tell you, from, I mean, from an investor's perspective, they're always looking for opportunities to build duplexes, and, I mean, it's a good return on investment. It might actually get some homes on the ground there potentially, unless we had like some type of specific use for single-family.
It's better off if it is single-family for the character of the neighborhood. It is, I mean, if, when the neighborhood was first established and they were growing that, if those seniors knew now what they knew then, they would never opted for multifamily in any instance, because any instance, when you put a multifamily in there, it's a problem. It brings drugs, you know, because that's basically who winds up in those multifamilies is not a stable single-family unit, you know what I'm saying? You have other kind of... You have other kind of people that come in and they bring the drugs and everything else. And every time we have the multifamily and the duplex and that, we have nothing but problems. And it actually tears up a neighborhood, you know. Single-family got no problem with it. You know, and all the single-family homes that have been built and need more have sold. Every last one of them have sold. And we hadn't had any problems out of them. But when you do that multifamily, it's nothing but problems.
Challenges.
Yeah, I mean, even the Oakland Place Apartments, because I imagine once that was zoned, single-family, but they agreed to let it go. Multifamily ain't been nothing but problems with it ever since. Nothing but problems. Drugs, undesirables. I mean, it's actually had a devastating effect on the community, to the point where if they knew what they do now, they would have fought that tooth and nail. And I heard that said, you know, hindsight's always 20/20, but they, you know, at the time, it was more along the lines of live and let live. You know, if you come in, it's no problem, you know. Everybody needs somewhere to stay. But when it brings the problems in and the drugs and that, and it tears up a community. Anemo is one of the oldest communities in Gravel County. You know, it's got roots going back to the 1800s.
Yeah, I think from a city's perspective, though, you've got to look at, we've talked about this before, the higher the density, the better the return on investment for a...
Yeah, but, you know, when you live there, I'm not interested in investment. You know what I'm saying? I'm interested in providing a stable place for my family and for other people to have a stable place for their family. You know, I'm not interested in it. I know what you're saying, and somebody that would look at that would think that way. But my first thought is, you know, having a place, this decent place to raise a family without all the problems that comes along with that zoning classification. Like he says, before I'd see it go to residential, I'd be more interested in seeing it a business there. Because I know what's going to happen with a business there. They're going to be there from eight to five and then they go. You know, or even if it's a convenience store, they'll be there and there's not going to be the same problems you'd have if you have a residential place. I'd be better off with it being staying C2 than I would taking it to RM multifamily.
You mentioned...
Mr. Pace, can a residence be built on the lot if it remains C2?
No.
It cannot.
Yeah.
And if it is rezoned, RM1 or R7.5, a business cannot be located there.
As far as return on investment, well, first of all, let me back up and say this. I know that it sounds as if this property owner was asked by the city to rezone because, and he agreed to it. And I understand why he wanted to go to RM. I mean, I get that all day long. And all I would want to vote for at this point in time is to deny going to the RM1 and staying at a C2. Because if we amend anything, I believe we're actually taking value away. I mean, when you go from commercial to a residential zoning, I think value goes down. But as far as return on investment and what the city is, we are looking for density. We believe in that. But we also believe in mixed use. And I think this lot now, I don't know if it will attract any kind of commercial development, but I think it lends itself well to, you know, some sort of C2 development surrounded by the community that would support it. That's my thoughts on that.
Well, we ran into this, if y'all remember that lot next to Greer Athletic Club. Do you remember that?
Yes.
And they came in and the neighborhood basically protested and said, we, for consistency's sake, we'd rather it stay C2. I think that's where we left that particular parcel. And we said, you know, we'd either like to see it be consistent with the neighborhood to have a home there or to have a business there, but we didn't want multifamily in that scenario. And I think this is very similar to that. Because like you said, if it's not consistent with the neighborhood, then it's not, it's not, now, I understand those transitional areas where we're on the edge of single-family and we're moving into commercial, and that's where multifamily's a better fit. And I mean, you know the neighborhood better than we do, and I can...
They're off with a commercial thing than they are with RM. And they'd rather see that, you know, than they go multifamily.
At R7.5, how many, with .4 acres, how many single-family residents could be put on there if it were subdivided?
Each lot would have to contain 7,500 square feet for residential.
So .4, 20,000, so three single-family homes. Okay, so for clarity, if it, if council were so to choose to vote in opposition of this, it remains C2, but it cannot come back up for a rezoning for one year?
Yes.
Being C2, is that a higher tax bracket for him? I mean, does that put him in a higher tax for his land or something?
Yes. I'm sorry, I can hear it for a moment.
It won't be higher because it's currently C2. It won't be higher.
It won't.
I mean, it's currently C2.
If it came down to R, then it would lessen a little or...
Well, it just depends on if the county tax assessor assesses it separately.
Land's not that big a deal anyway. But undeveloped land. My only thought is, we went to him. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah. So that's my only thought. I mean, and if you said we originally approached him to go to the 7.5...
Correct.
Then that's what I, you know, since we went to him as a city.
Each category still falls within the comprehensive plan, residential land use area, as was placed out in the comprehensive plan in 2017.
Yeah, and you said it was originally the 7.5, and then he asked that it be done the other, so, yeah.
Mr. Diggers, if we, this has to have two readings, correct?
If it passes first reading.
Okay, so if we, if there's a supermajority that says no, then it's dead?
Correct. If five vote no, it's dead. Because there's a motion to approve. If we vote on that motion and there's five no votes, it's dead.
Let me ask you this. Is there a way to hold it over and go back to him and ask him if he will consider going back to R7?
R7.5.
I mean, if you're so choosing, ask that question.
Yes, it would not go back to the Planning Commission, but you could hold it over and we could go to him and ask that question and bring you that answer.
That's what I'd like to do, give him that chance.
That's where I was going with that question. I think that's the way to go. Because, you know, if he's adamantly against 7.5, that's fine.
I think he's adamantly against it. I just think he saw that his benefit would be to seek RM1 versus 7.5, and this would be an opportunity for him to do so.
Right. And I would prefer to let him have that, that opportunity, right.
To either vote no or bring it back and amend the zoning would require five votes, recognizing that the Planning Commission brought it to you with a recommendation of RM1. Okay.
So do you have to change the motion or you have to?
You have a motion to approve and a second. You would either need an amended, a new motion to table, or the person who made the motion and the second would rescind their motion and a motion made to table.
I didn't, I don't think, who made the motion?
I think I did. Did I make it?
Yes.
I rescind my motion. And Kimberly, please.
I rescind my second.
For the motion...
Okay, the motion has been rescinded and the second has been rescinded.
Okay.
And what we have before us is first reading of ordinance number 22-2015, which is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of properties owned by Ira J. Handy, located on Oakland Avenue, McKissick Street and Fuller Street from C2 Commercial to RM1 Residential Multifamily. That comes before us this evening for action. Do I hear a motion relative to ordinance number 22-2015?
Now, you say, I make a motion to table it. I like to make a motion to table it so that you can go back and ask him if he'd reconsider.
I have a motion to table and a second, so the floor is open again for discussion. I agree in principle, since we have, since he has made this decision, that if we are indeed going to consider changing it or do something different, that we should at least give him that option. To Ms. Albert's point, it seems to me like we've already given him this option once and he's made a decision. I'm not exactly clear that, you know, that he's going to change that, but at least we can, we can ask him to reconsider. Motion and a second to table the action to hear any other discussion? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. First reading of ordinance number 23-2015, an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Leon Hicks Real Estate, LLC, located at 100 Oakland Avenue from C2 to R7.5. Mr. Pace?
Again, may the council recognize the redevelopment of the equal community and three approved plans for that area and in review of the comprehensive plan. We recommend for this R7.5 zoning for this particular property. No one was there representing the property. However, property owners all were notified via certified mail, and responses all came back from the certified mail favor in pursuit of it. Mr. Hicks did not respond. I don't, like I said, wasn't there, I don't believe was an audience or had represented. But the Planning Commission did recommend to approve, and the motion carried 5.1 in favor of R7.5.
I don't have my calculator on me, but .18 acres must be really close to 7,500 square feet. .2 would be, what, 8,000? I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
.18 is 7,840 feet.
300 feet to spare.
300 feet.
It's a tiny house, isn't it?
That would match.
Have a motion and a second in regards to ordinance 23-2015. By show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Let the record indicate, no one indicated so. Floor's open for discussion. Question? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. First reading of ordinance number 24-2015, an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Alicia Drummond, located at 103 Forest Street from C2 Commercial to R7.5 Residential Single Multifamily. Mr. Pace?
Again, may the council have conversations with the owner of the property. She was in agreement to the request for 7.5 and again, did not realize her property was C2 also, and the Planning Commission did recommend 5.2 approve 7.5.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Let the record reflect, no one indicated so. Entertain a motion to receive.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Floor's open for discussion.
She only has enough room on this one to build one house. In other words, you can't put two on this.
No, the house is already there anyway.
The house is there?
Yeah, she's already got the house.
She can't subdivide it.
I don't think she wants to.
That should make her taxes go down. Yeah. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. First reading of ordinance 25-2015, an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Carmelita Foster, located at 107 Forest Street from C2 to R7.5. Mr. Pace?
Again, may the council be the same as the mayor of the comprehensive plan, that fits that would be residential, single-family and R7.5, those two zoning characteristics.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property or a representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Let the record reflect, nobody indicated so. Do I hear a motion to receive?
No motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion?
Glenn, the current property owner agrees to go to 7.5?
That one, I don't think responded either, Mr. Airwood.
Is there, is that house, is there a house on that?
There's a house on that.
Okay.
Let me ask you this. If we got her, if the property's been sold, I mean, you got her, you got her as the owner, but I'm not so sure she's actually the owner now, because I think it was sold to somebody else. Does that make a difference?
Yes, sir, it would if it passed.
Well, I think it's...
From what I reckon, this was...
But I think it's been, matter of fact, I'm pretty sure it's been sold because guys been moving stuff in there.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
Well, it may not negate it because the property was posted and advertised. Certified letter was sent, but it was also posted and advertised.
Which I don't think Charlie would have any problem with in no way, you know. But I know he's bought the property. It's the guy that, this house burned up right next door.
Right.
He's buying that.
Okay, if he hasn't officially closed on it, then before this process started, we would have to do a better, a more complete tire search to see if that adds to the spire.
We can look at that before second reading though, right?
We can check on that.
I think it would be based on the information we had at the time of the reading written.
Exactly. That was our current information, however...
Which I don't think he'd have any problem with anyway, you know, because he's going to live there anyway.
Correct. And we still like to go check that.
Yeah. Well, it's possible anyway.
But that process is taking place. We're not being jacked for doing that. However, we can do that from the R7.
Yeah, because the reason I say, because I know he's already moving his stuff in there already, I already know that, you know. So I don't know if it's been recorded or what, you know.
Other questions, comments? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. First reading of ordinance number 26-2015, an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Calvary Baptist Church, located at 108 Forest Street from C2 Commercial to R7.5 Residential. Mr. Pace?
Mayor, the council, again, the church on, the church on three parcels that are in front of it, two, front Point Set Street, and one basically being at the bottom of the tail of the church that faces the back of most lots and fronts Forest Street in that area. The Planning Commission, again, looking at the two parcels on the front with the comprehensive plan, which calls for that neighborhood corridor along Point Set Highway, the two properties on the front, would in fact fit C2 along that area. However, further deep into the lot, it was apparent that the comprehensive plan recommended RLU3 for that area, and that is conjunction with R7.5. We did bring that before the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission, after discussions with representative from the church, decided to not go with that recommendation and to leave the property, voted to leave the property C2. That recommendation is, would amend what the ordinance says of 7.5.
All right, you've confused me here.
Me too.
The Planning Commission... The planning commission voted to leave the property in its character of C2 and deny staff request for 7.5.
It is C2. We recommended 7.5. Planning commission said no. It's coming to you with a recommendation of 7.5. If it is your desire to uphold the decision of the planning commission, then the ordinance needs to be defeated.
Yep.
Now, you said the church wanted, what did the church want?
They want to leave it as it is.
They want to leave it as commercial. They, I think, made arguments to the planning commission in regards to resell of the property.
It shows in that note.
For church purposes. It was explained to, I did have conversations with one of the deacons or trustees of the church prior to this, and on phone conversation, they were in agreement, but it's simple change in between phone conversations and the meeting. But I explained that a church could go in either district, in a residential district or in a commercial district. It would not impact whether or not a church could be there, church associated uses could be there. It would still be applicable to either zoning classifications. And they made argument to the planning commission that night that they would like to leave it as C2. And that's what they voted to do. That, you know.
Mr. Pace, the link to the map is, goes back to, links you back to the ordinance. If we could.
That must be what I'm trying to.
Right, yeah. It does.
I was trying to do that myself and it went back to ordinance, that's what I was trying to do.
This is a cross.
But I know where, you're talking, there's the church and there's that big vacant lot that's right in front of it.
It's got steps leading into it.
There's three parcels later. There's two that front, they're similar, but not in size, to Mr. Handy's property has long and fronts Point Set, and then there's a long and narrow piece that runs parallel to those two in front of the church. It's all those come down the front steps and here over the other piece of property. And that's the piece that we were seeking to change. I think the church currently is some of R 7.5 where the actual facilities is now, and they choose to recommend or ask that it be left as C2 for the possibility of, if it was resold.
And I certainly have no issue with that. I mean, that, that fronts on West Point Set Street, and I think that's probably valid in terms of the fact that it's completely surrounded by businesses right there anyway. A show of hand, is the owner of the property or a representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Let the record so indicate, no one showed that they were. I'll entertain a motion to receive. We don't have one, do we?
So moved.
It dies without one.
If you make a motion, it dies.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I hear a second?
Motion to do what?
To accept as written, as recommended.
At 7.5.
Now, the church wants it stays to C2, correct?
Planning commission voted.
And the planning commission said leave it at C2.
Okay, there is a motion. Let's, let's, let's get this straight before we go any further. The motion is to receive as written, which would be in opposition to the recommendation from the planning commission. Without a second, it dies. With a second, we'll go to a vote. A vote overturned will require a super majority.
Correct.
First reading of ordinance 26-2015. Motion on the floor, do I hear a second? If the motion dies without a second, the property remains C2, is that correct, Mr.? Okay. Third and final time, do I hear a second? Let the record indicate that there was no second in regards to ordinance 26,000, 26, 2015. Motion will fail. All right, we move on then. First reading of ordinance number 27-2015. This is an ordinance amending the City of Greer Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 2, City Council, Division 1, General sections 2-36 regarding compensation. Mr. Driggers?
Members of council, you may recall as we were working this past year through our class and comp study, we took action in our budget and made adjustments within our organization to our compensation and classification systems for our employees. During that process as well, we reviewed the compensation of our elected officials, took no action on that at that time, but also appropriated dollars within the budget for an adjustment if in the future it was council's desire to do so. We completed all of the background work in looking at that. A couple of things that I do think that you need to, to be aware of is that, first is that there has been no adjustment to the compensation of elected officials within the City of Greer since 2000. So for 15 years, the salaries that we have today are, are set at the same level that they were in 2000. Made an adjustment, a small adjustment in 2000. Had an opportunity in reviewing like-sized communities, as you know, when we do our comparison to all municipalities within South Carolina, we have a group of those municipalities that we will do comparisons to, and those will range anywhere from the ones that, in this particular study, just to kind of let you know, Aiken, Anderson, Bluffton, Casey, Conway, Florence, I didn't use, that was Hilton Head, did not use Hilton Head, Lexington, Malden, Mount Pleasant, Simpsonville, North Augusta, and Sumter, and West Columbia. Had an opportunity to look at all of those, and, and what we found is that in most of those instances, our current salary fell far below that comparison group. We looked at what was more in line with the mean of that comparison group, that 15 comparative cities, and again, based on population size, number of employees, and budget size, those were our sample group that we took a look at. In comparison to all those, I've made a recommendation to council for consideration of an adjustment, as you see in the ordinance. The ratios between the council and mayor, and the council and the mayor pro temp have remained identical to what it has been historically for the City of Greer, made no changes in that proportion difference, that ratio difference between council, mayor pro temp, and mayor, and bring this to you as a recommendation for your consideration, primarily because 15 years is a long time to, in consideration. Again, it, the way that the state statute works is that council has an opportunity to consider these items. You may only consider it when there is a general election, and our general election would be this November, and it does not take effect until after the first of the year following a general election. So the opportunity for these considerations by state statute is only every two years, and it takes effect after that. So the intent that state legislature has placed in that is that, that council is setting compensation for future councils as well. Obviously, this does affect you because we are, we're certified and moving forward, but, but it's not something that you can place on the table and consider at any time through time constraints relative to that. So anyway, we've had discussion on that in the past. I've recommended it in the past, and you did not think at that time that the, the timing was appropriate, but I bring it to you again for consideration and feel very comfortable that the numbers are appropriate, based again on comparison to similar sized communities.
Counsel, we have first reading of ordinance 27-2015. Do I hear a motion to receive?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second in that regard. Floor is open for discussion or comments?
I, I think as an elected official, and because of hearing when the other elected officials go to vote and vote for their salary increase, I get very angry that they're voting themselves a raise. And half the time, as a citizen, and most citizens at this point, the way everything is going now, we certainly wouldn't recommend that our leaders in, in the state and in the, in DC, my feelings are, at this point, that I would not recommend a raise for them. And there's too much controversy. And then when it comes to appointing myself a raise, then I have a problem with that. That's my story.
I totally disagree. I think when my, I was one of the ones that spoke to Mr. Driggers and brought it up in our sessions on there. Again, we're not voting for it for ourselves, we're voting for people down the road on there, and my first concern was for the mayor because I think he does an extreme amount, an extreme amount, I would quit. If it was me personally to do it, even if being a community service, the Bible tells us a man is worthy of his pay. And even from that standpoint, we're ordained in these positions. We still do have lives that we have to maintain, we have families that we have to maintain. We're called on constantly, not on a regular basis, but we are called on a lot for the city to do things, and we all have positions that we have to maintain that we're not able to do them. So when it's able and it's, the ability is there to do it, then I think it is. And I've talked to numerous citizens last year, year before last, when I brought it up, that would definitely support an increase. For 15 years, I think that's well overdue. So I definitely would agree.
Mr. Driggers, we have any idea what the total budget was in 2000 versus today?
Well, we're at 20, oh, I would, I would say. Eight million?
Seven to eight.
Seven, eight million.
So it's almost tripled. The budget that we oversee has almost tripled since then.
Well, one thing I'd, I'd like to say though is that, you know, I've been on, I was on council last time, they did the raise, and I know that anybody that serves in these seats, you don't do it for the money. Because if you do it for the money, you've been long gone, you know. There, there's no way, you know, I mean, that income that they give us, that's, that's just token, anybody that serves in these seats, it's, it's from the heart, you know, and then, and like she says too, the mayor, the mayor really, you know, I mean, we got a, we got a mayor, a full-time mayor with, with really part-time pay, and the mayor never grumbles not, not one time, you know, and I'm glad he's back this week because that ain't an easy seat to sit in. And I sure wouldn't want to do it full-time all the time, but the mayor, he's represented Greer well, you know, and, and I think that any raise like this is, is just, it's, it's a token, you know, I mean, it's just a way to say thank you for your service, because I say again, anybody that sits in these seats and I think you'll agree, you don't do it for the money, you know. Ain't no way in the world you do it for the money. If you did for the money, you would be sitting here.
I don't think anybody looked at the salary before they ran. Everybody had a passion.
That's right.
Or an issue that they ran. And, and it's not a job, it's a, it's a, it's a service.
It's a service.
And you're right, our mayor is, is, is the poster boy for, you know, Mr., for getting something done as your mayor. I mean, there is no better.
No, man.
And, you know, the, the reimbursement for your time, we got a meetings, we have council meetings, we have workshops, did I mention we have meetings?
Meetings.
Yeah, and, and all of us, for the most part, being in business for yourself, there is a sacrifice. And, and, and I did a little calculation and a little figuring over the weekend and the, and, and the way it works for, for us being in business, that sacrifice, not only do you, of course, not make money while you're, you're doing council business, you're, you're really losing money.
Yep.
So it, it makes up to a great degree, but as you say, nobody does this for the money or benefits. And if you don't have that fire to serve Greer, then you really don't deserve to be here, and I think we all do.
I agree.
That's the great thing about everybody on this council.
Yep, I agree. Well put.
Others? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert? Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, we got the first reading of ordinance number 28-2015. This is an ordinance to amend the City of Greer Code of Ordinances, Chapter 90, Utilities, Article 2, Sewer Use and Pretreatment, Division 4, Prohibitions and Limitations on Waste Water Discharges and Repealing and Replacing Attachment A in its entirety. We have with us this evening both David Hancock and Don Milner in regards to this. This is commensurate with ordinance number 2-2015, which change, changes to the CPW Pretreatment Plan and associated city ordinances were sent to DEHAC for its review and approval. It was during the review process, DEHAC suggested several non-material changes as well as changing Attachment A. Attachment A shows the industrial waste water discharge limitations have been changed from concentrations based to mass-based. DEHAC said we could use either concentration-based or mass-based. This is the better for the industry because allocation is given according to the industry's needs. Therefore, there is less possibility of industries having permit violations. No other changes were made. Public comment was solicited during the 30-day period commencing in September and expired with no comment. This information came to us as a request from Mr. Tuttle, the general manager of CPW. Gentlemen, do you have anything that y'all would like to add to that this evening? You want to come to the podium then for a matter of the record?
Now, I just wanted to go into this, just flatly before they can. What was requested by DEHAC that we changed? What, oh, this pretreatment program grant was submitted to DEHAC requesting minor changes in section four, prohibitions, limitations on waste or discharge. And DEHAC suggested changing the method by which CPW determines industrial waste or discharge limitations. These, this change from concentration-based to mass-based, and it would be more beneficial for permitted industries. CPW made the changes and recent issue program grant to DEHAC. The 30-day public comment period passed with no comments received, and final program was approved by DEHAC. The changes that DEHAC had requested were minor changes. The strikeouts are of the old language and the Mississippi language. The most important thing in here is that they requested a PH, a minimum PH change from 5 to 5.5, so we, we made that change, and we also added a maximum PH of 12.5. The other, another change was any prohibited discharges, e-trucks or haul balloons without prior permission from general manager. Well, that's not really a prohibited discharge, that's a conditionally prohibited discharge because without prior written permission, there is a condition. So we changed that from prohibited to conditionally prohibited. And then finally, we changed the local limits from concentration-based to mass-based. The local discharge limits for industries are now based on the specific industrial discharge need on a mass basis. Previously, they were based on a fixed concentration that would be given to the industry, and they're current it. Now, we have more flexibility to look at the, the historical need. Now, we have more flexibility to look at the historical need, and we can give them a mass-based limit. The limits placed in the industrial use permit are written as a concentration limit based on monthly average permit plus. So we take the mass-based on need, we back calculate that to a concentration, and then put that in the permit. So it's, the industries are less likely to have permit violations for allocations or based on historical needs, so it definitely is very good. And so those were just, I just wanted to explain a little bit.
Thank you, sir. Any questions to Mr. Milner? We appreciate the additional information. Thank you, sir. Appreciate all y'all are doing for us in that regard. Ordinance number 28-2015, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Some move.
Second?
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, discussion or questions? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker? Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Last item before us this evening is a request from Mr. Seifert in regards to Accommodations Tax Act Tourism Provisions. As you're aware, the allocation and distribution of the statute, advertising and promotion allocation funds will require some action, and Mr. Seifert was going to bring us some additional information in regards to the Accommodations Tax Act and the tourism provisions. Floor is here, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. There's two pieces that we need to discuss here tonight that were requested for discussion for the tax act and the provisions. Just want to quickly give you some context so you know what we're talking about. You know, when you go to a hotel, you can have a 10% accommodation tax. That money is collected by the hotels, forwarded to the state, and then the state redistributes that to all the local governments, counties, and cities alike. Once that money is received, and it's state law by statute, all of that money is broken into two categories. One category is for advertising and promotion of the events to drive tourism. The second is being programmatic, so to help pay for expenses for the events of their advertising with the first allocated fund. So the first part of the request tonight is to ask for your approval in distributing the advertising piece. Under state statute, after the monies are received by the governments, the government is required to immediately distribute those funds to other organizations to use those advertising bodies. Tonight, we'd like to bring to you a recommendation of $2,000 to be distributed to the Greer Chamber of Commerce, and $8,237.2% distributed on the, so now allocated to advertising money. That $8,200 will be requested to be distributed at the Greer Recreation Association. All of these dollars will be restricted for, through the Greer Chamber of Commerce and Greer Recreation Association to, for outside advertising, outside of city limits, to help drive tourism for the events that we're holding here inside the city.
So as an example, we would, for the chamber, it would be Family Fest and Oktoberfest, and it's identified that it has to be for advertising, to bring people into the community. That's the only purpose it can be used for. That through the Greer Recreation Association would be Freedom Blast, International Festival, and any of the tournaments that we are involved in through that group as well.
Would there have, would there have been other organizations that might have been qualified to use that money for advertising? I mean, were there requests for that money, or did we just allocate that money based on?
Historically, the, kind of back up a little bit, some history there, there's multiple thresholds in the statute, and historically, we have allocated both portions, advertising and programmatic, directly to the Recreation Association, and they have through the years used those funds to run statewide regional programs. This past year, we broke that next threshold of $50,000 we've allocated back to the city that we have been turning to allocate back out to other organizations. The first portion of the advertising promoting, the governments determine who they want to allocate those dollars to. Are there other agencies that are critical? Could be, we're looking on historical basis and just trying to look at the agencies we know of that have an ongoing advertising program. That's one of the stipulations in the statute that is an organization must have existing an ongoing advertising program.
Well, let me be clear, I've got no problem with either one of the agencies that we've allotted dollars to. My question, I guess, more specifically is, and again, I think the chamber does a wonderful job, was there, was there a reason that the dollars were allocated to the chamber as opposed to GDC or?
Yes, sir, and we questioned that ourselves, because we are aware that GDC has a marketing budget.
Yes, sir.
But the intent of the hospitality accommodations dollars, accommodations dollars under the statute, is that they can only be used for the purpose of bringing people from outside the community into the community, not to promote it, but to bring them for a specific event, not general marketing or promotion.
Okay.
Now, that doesn't mean that GDC may would not have something that would qualify moving forward, but the statute also says that we have to immediately distribute the funds. And so what we're doing, we're making a recommendation for this first allocation, and by all means, if it's council's directive for us to expand that or to look at that differently moving forward, we're very, very open to that, and can look at what those opportunities may be, and other groups may would be able to come in and make a reasonable argument that they are doing that also for consideration.
Okay.
That certainly is an option for us to, in moving forward. But this is just one of those that we're kind of told how it has to be used under the statute, but we're given the discretion of who to give it to.
Just for the clarification, these funds are to drive, what we term heads and beds. For GDC purposes, they're for dominant purposes, bringing commercial development, commercial visitors. You know, again, something very needed to be implemented. The intent of this legislation would be bringing in injured as they go into development.
Sure. I understand fully. Okay, thank you. That clarifies. There's no action in regards to this? This isn't just?
Yes, sir, we would actually need councils, we're making a recommendation to council for the distribution of 2,000 to Greater Greer Chamber of Commerce, and 8,237.62 to Greer Recreation Association. We are asking council's approval for that distribution.
Counsel, you heard the recommendation from staff. Do I hear a motion to receive?
Some move.
Second?
Have a motion and a second in that regard. Any further questions?
I'd just like to make a comment in the same vein, kind of where the mayor was going with that. I would love to hear if there are other organizations out there that would like this type of support that are going to be driving bodies into the city. So, I mean, I appreciate the recommendation, but I'm sure there's, just like we talked about GDC, I mean, they're doing that support right now for Greer, with Greer Station Association. I'm sure they'd argue that they're, just like the Halloween event, I think they're about to host. I mean, that's going to be driving a lot of people downtown, so.
But they may not be staying overnight, which is part of the purpose of these funds.
Yeah. We have, accommodations has to, the purpose of the advertising is for folks to come and stay in local accommodations.
Right. Well, that makes, I mean, that makes more sense.
So Family Fest would certainly qualify.
Sure, and anything that the recreation department does, especially with overnight tournaments and different things like that, would make sense.
Yeah. Others? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker? Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Now, part two.
After part two, the programmatic portion of those money, the statute again now requires a two-year commitment. Of that committee has to have seven members, again, the superpart standing. Four members of that seven needs to be of the hospitality industry, to, from lodgings and to the restaurants. The fifth member of that committee has to come from the cultural arts community, and then there are two at-large members, and that's a total of seven. We're just, tonight, we'd like to bring you this as kind of the avenue that we're pursuing, and would like your approval to proceed, or if you would like to take another route, we're certainly looking at that too. But we would like to approach some individuals and bring these recommendations back to you of the individual to fulfill this committee, or if you would like to take the option of naming individuals that you might be interested to serve on that committee also. If you would like for us to do that, we will be prepared to come back in two weeks with a slate of names for your consideration.
We just need direction on how, we have to do it. We just need direction from you on how you would like for us to do it.
Okay, one more time, David. The cultural arts, two at-large, recreation?
Two from hotels.
Two from hotels.
Two from restaurants.
Okay.
Two at-large, and one from cultural arts.
Is this the industry, when you say from, or for instance, in recreation, is it someone who?
Not recreation.
What'd you say? That's not one of them. I misquoted that.
Cultural arts.
Hotels.
Hotels.
Cultural arts.
And two at-large.
They have to, two have to work in the hotel industry, two have to work in the restaurant industry. One must be involved actively in the cultural arts community, and the other two are at-large.
And what this committee does, to your questions earlier, is to receive these allocations.
Take the requests and the applications.
Yes.
They will allocate those funds to the agencies making the application. That's correct.
I think I would be comfortable with allowing the staff to do that, and maybe if we have recommendations or suggestions, we can forward them to you.
What I was going to say.
Our intent is just to get a slate of names in front of you in the means that is suitable to you in that fashion, but we're glad to do the legwork, but we're also glad for you to do the legwork, however you want us to do it.
Right now, are you guys sitting on a list of names?
We've got some ideas, but we haven't started going.
Yeah, because, I mean, I, there's, the two at-large, I could think of two nominees that I'd like, so we can just submit those to?
You'd like the four first?
Absolutely.
I'll need to ask them first.
We'll keep them four, do it, and we'll ask them.
You'd like for us to do that?
Yeah.
So that requires no action, we just needed some general direction of council. We would anticipate then on your next agenda that we'll have this item again. To Mr. Bettis's point, by all means, please, if there are any of those positions that you know of folks, or there's people you would like for us to extend, have a conversation with, to extend an invitation for them to participate in that group. It's a very important group. They are going to allocate resources through the receipts of our hospitality fund, and I would anticipate we will get lots of requests. We will get more requests for funds than we will have funds available, and that group will make decisions, recommendations back to you. And as I understand that correctly, Mr. Seifert, they will make recommendations back to council.
And that group would meet, what, a couple times a year?
At most.
Okay. Once. We may send them the applications, they review them, they meet, make recommendations, and we bring it to council.
Have the staff left in the process of a new committee anticipate at least two to three meetings initially to establish the application in the process that that committee was to follow, and then meeting to discuss the application.
They'll have to elect a chair, those types of things.
So council appoints these seven places.
Yes. Council appoints, they make recommendation to council, council accepts, amends, or rejects their recommendations.
Okay, what we need to remember is, within those guidelines, we may have multiple recommendations, so we will be voting on people in that regard. Okay. All right, counsel, you clear? If you want to nominate somebody, or at least nominate them to the slate, we need to make sure that David or Mr. Driggers gets those names within the next 10 days because the announcement about, will go out on the Friday before the meeting, so you need to get it to them fairly quickly. All right? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel, we have no items for executive session this evening, since we have no further business. Stand adjourned.